I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands.
One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And tonight, we're joined by a special guest, Jaime Aguirre, our treasurer. And in a moment, Jaime will give us an overview of the treasurer's role and what he's been doing for the past decade or so. And we do have to do one administrative thing. Jaime will take the oath of office of the trustee, I'm sorry, of the treasurer. And Jaime, if you don't have a copy of it, you can just repeat after me.
Sure.
I'm going to ask you to rise and and you can repeat after me. I, please state your name.
I, Jaime Aguirre.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
Or affirm that I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the Office of Treasurer of the Austin Public Library.
Of the Office of Treasurer of the Austin Public Library.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the very best of my abilities.
Thank you.
Jaime, long time no see.
I know, Alice, how are you? Good to see you.
Your youngest must have graduated from college already.
He did. He's graduated and working.
What does he do?
He's an environmental scientist.
Wow, good for you.
Thank you very much.
Well, sending you hugs. Haven't seen you, probably in a decade in person.
It's been a while. Hugs to you too, Alice.
And I'm a grandmother now, my daughter.
I was hearing that in the beginning. Congratulations. Wonderful, wonderful.
I've been out here for a month, so I have to go home.
Okay, yeah, yeah, you won't be happy about that, but enjoy it while it lasts.
Jaime, we haven't prepared a format, but I'm going to leave it open to you to give us an overview of the things that you find the treasurer must do and perhaps things that you think the treasurer can do in the future.
Okay, sure. I was wondering if I can share my screen through this. I haven't used Zoom very much. Maybe I can't.
You'd be able to, if you get shit screen.
I don't see the option. Where would I do that, Karen?
On the bottom of your screen, the way I see it from my end, there's a green share screen button.
There it is. Yes, there it is. I see it. Okay, cool. Thank you.
Jaime, are you working remotely or in person? Are you retired?
I have been working remotely for two years or so. And I enjoy it. I enjoy it very much. We haven't had to go back yet, but you know, we'll see. They're still talking about it.
So you must use WebEx or Teams or something then?
Yeah, we're heavily into Teams.
Teams, yeah. I can't use Teams on my Mac.
Really?
Yeah, the Open Door uses it, but it's not compatible with my Mac.
I see. Can you guys see the screen at this point?
Yes, we can.
Yes, yeah.
Okay, so I just want to begin by sharing some of the duties of the treasurer that you're probably aware of these, but I just want to go through them maybe in some level of detail. For starters, the treasurer is the point of contact to the staff and basically any level of management for reporting. What I consider any type of suspicious financial activity and you know suspicious doesn't mean something is wrong. Sometimes it just means that you have, it may not look right, or you may not understand why it's happening. That could also be deemed as suspicious. But the treasurer's role is to be part of that circle that is, who is communicated to when these types of things happen. And of course, he's quite in the middle of the financial activities anyway. But to the staff who are not in those circles, it is good to know. Of course, they have Karen and they have the board as well. But the treasurer is well, one of the people who is considered to be one of the primary contacts for that role. And today, and I don't remember quite honestly how many years I've been doing this. I think 10 or 11, I don't know. But in all this time, I have really not had any reports of any sort of dubious or suspicious financial activities. So I think that's a plus. That's a very good thing. And it speaks about how the library is being run. So anyway, that is the first point, what I consider one of the top responsibilities of the treasurer. Internal controls. All right, so the treasurer, as part of his role, is also responsible for establishing, if they don't already exist, but also staying on top of internal controls and procedures. You can think of it like checks and balances. So in terms of checks and balances, for example, one of the one of the guidelines we always go by is you always want to have more than one person in charge of just about anything having to do with finances, whether that is the warrants, like the warrants or the expenses that are paid. We have the Board of Trustees that reviews them. Karen, of course, approves them and I get to sign the checks when the time comes. So then you can see that at some point, if there's something that looks off, one of those parties will catch the error. Okay, so where there aren't any existing internal controls, the treasurer's role is to continue to really grow with the system. And we'll talk about that, I think, a little bit more in a bit. But the controls that we've implemented and we've had in place for quite some time, I think have been working out very well. But we'll talk about that a little bit later. The next item is the bi-weekly review of the library expenditures. And also, while the library expenditures are getting paid, I make it my responsibility to review and examine for the recipients. Who is getting a check cut out by the library? Which vendors are they? Are they vendors? Are they individuals? Are there any high payments in here or any, again, activity that I don't recognize? And having looked at the warrants and checks and vendors for quite some time, Karen will tell you this frequently, probably once every time that there's a warrant that I'll ask, well, what is this for? I don't recognize it. You know, give me some more background if you don't mind. And it just goes to the point that if anything looks like I don't recognize it, it's the treasurer's job to ask about it. Rather than just assume it's, it's fine. So I make that part of my priorities when I do the review. The signing of the expense checks and reviewing the library expenditures for appropriateness of financial accounts that are being used to log the expense charges. Along with the actual report, which is created in Excel by Bob and given to Karen. Although I'm signing the checks, there is of course information behind the scenes happening. And that is where are these being logged to? So for example, we have performers, piano tuning, we have cash getting collected from our copy machines. So these all have to be attributed to the right financial accounts behind the scenes, right? It's more of an accounting type function. And that's actually been pretty good. I think maybe once or twice I could remember in all this time that I maybe questioned why something was being charged somewhere. Not to say it was being charged to the wrong place, but sometimes I feel like if the vendor may lead me to a particular account that should be used, then I will, I will ask, I will question it. And I think this has been working fine. The next item is, I think the financial, primary financial representation on behalf of the library at the financial audits is, is an important one that I consider. Because as you know, the financial audit report is quite lengthy. It includes a annual summary and breakdown over the last two, three years of how well we're doing on relative accounts, how well we're doing on our expenses, expenditures, how well we're doing on payments for staff, for pension and benefits. So all of that gets taken into consideration in the audit. And I think having a experience with the audits, what we've done in the past and what we do on operational basis has helped to play a role, a better role in how that gets carried out, as well as, by the way, acting upon any suggestions that are brought about as a result of the financial audits. So I think that that has also helped us to be very consistent in the way that the operations have worked at the library for some time. Finally, I am the backup approver on the ADP payroll wire transfers. And I may have only been asked to approve one such transfer. And this might have been going back, Karen, four, five, six years in that timeframe. But when it was needed, it was needed. So it's one of those roles that you only know who is supposed to be doing it, if you can't find the person who's supposed to be doing it. In any event, so those are the primary roles. And I can pause here if you'd like and maybe just open it up for questions before talking about just a couple more items.
For any questions, Jaime, do you also sign checks for the library?
I have been signing checks with COVID. That kind of came to a pause because of, you know, obvious reasons with the library being a public place. There's a lot more room for spreading of the virus and so on and so forth. So that has come to a pause for right now. So what's happened in the last, what, Karen, 12, 18 months, whatever this started, I have been approving over email. I still get to review what goes on into the checks, but it's just that I'm not physically signing them. But I do get, the rest of the process is still holding strong and going on.
Thank you.
Sure. Any other questions? Then I'll touch upon the last subject.
Okay.
All right. The last subject is really having to do with what we go, where we go from here. What is the future? Do we need to change anything? Well, I think where we are right now is the library budget has grown since the time I joined. I think, if I remember correctly, don't, no one fact-checked me, but it was like probably 2.1, 1.7 million dollar budget back in the early days. And now you're looking at a much, much greater responsibility and investment by the community into the library and the people and resources that I feel as the growth continues, some of our, some of our responsibilities have to grow along with that. And one of my concerns as we become bigger is we never really lose the responsibility over the community's resources. And I mean, I have been big on that since day one, when I was on the board. That I don't really like to think that any of the resources the community is investing in are ever at risk or abused or anything like that. Because I know how everyone works hard and no one wants to see their money misspent, right? So anyway, I consider that to be one of my primary responsibilities and making sure that doesn't happen. So having said that, we don't always have, I don't think, in the past, maybe we didn't need to. And perhaps it's not even a, a single person who's responsible for it. But the more we grow, I think that we have more resources. With the law, more resources comes a greater responsibility to make sure that these are best being used to the best of the abilities of the patrons, of everyone involved, that they are being used fairly, that they're being acquired in the proper way and that they're being disposed of in the right way. So you think about the resources and it's not always money. Money is just one of the factors, right? But space is a factor. Cleaning supplies is a factor, paper is a factor. And I can only tell you based on past experiences that some corporations I worked at, they sometimes have very strict guidelines on, oh my God, you can only use one ream of paper per day or per week. And that printer can only be used. And if you do use that, it has to be signed off by this person. And some of them are, you know, kind of extreme. On the other hand, we don't really have much in the way of those controls at the library yet. And I think it's a question for the board to have a discussion, a conversation around whether or not all of our resources, I need to have a higher level of scrutiny behind the utilization of those resources, the disposal of those resources. So for example, we decide to, a few years back, we upgraded or we restored one of the initial, the desks. Karen, remember the, there was a ceremony commemorating the desk that was restored. And I remember the typewriter that was on the desk. Anyway, so this desk probably took the place of other furniture that was in place. So what happened to the furniture at the time? Again, I'm giving as an example. What happened to the furniture? Was the furniture thrown in the garbage? Was the furniture sold? Was the furniture, I don't know, put in another room? Those kinds of things. So again, as we grow, I think that we need to ask those types of questions. Do we want that different level of scrutiny? Because library is growing and it's very, very likely five, 10 years from now, we'll be talking about a much greater level of responsibility, a much greater level of resources. So as board members, as community members, do we have a vested interest in taking the time now to maybe start the roadmap to say, yeah, we do need to maybe take a step forward to make sure that these resources are taken care of? Again, the acquisition, the utilization and the disposal of all our resources that are usable by the community. And again, it includes everything, right? It includes your, your supplies, your museum passes. It includes anything that we think is reusable or to be used by the community. Having greater insight into how those happened throughout the library, I think would be beneficial, certainly from a treasurer's perspective, it would be beneficial. And again, I want to just preface it by saying that it may not only be the treasurer that's accountable or responsible for making sure that that gets done. I think it's maybe a combined effort across the board. Just the way we do it with warrants, which is, if you think about it, a smaller expense when considering the full raw assets of the library from all the way from the building down to the lowest level being pens and paper and pencils, et cetera. So those are the questions I think I wanted to bring up towards the end. So now that we've covered the responsibilities of the treasurer and kind of where we are and where we're going, I perhaps want to leave that with you. If you want to openly discuss that either now or later or scheduled time some other day, that's fine with me. But I do think that that's something that we need to maybe bring into our focus.
Those are valid points. It's not something that I've ever thought about before. So we will have to take it in our considerations and, and see where that fits in and whose role it might be. And I might be coming back to you.
Yeah.
Your thoughts on that a little more detail.
Certainly.
Any other questions for Jaime or comments at this time? Okay.
My only other comment is, my only other comment is if the board will call me Jaime, not Jaime.
Michael.
That's okay. I would be happiest.
Jaime, when did you take this position?
So Matt was saying that he's been with the board for eight years. I was with the board maybe two or three years prior to Matt, so maybe 10, 11 years now.
I'm thinking that, yeah, yeah. So I just want the, my peer, you know, peer members to know that Jaime, single-handedly got us to the point where we actually got a professional audit and worked down three or four pages of comments from the original audit to the point where now we get like no comments. So you really brought structure and a judicious eye to our finances that was not there before.
Thank you, Alice.
Treasurer. So I just want everyone to really understand that, that we never had the level of scrutiny and checks and balances until Jaime took that on. And he worked closely with the auditor on working all those comments down to essentially none now.
We do have a very clean report. So thank you, Alice. I appreciate it.
That was a lot of work on your part, Jaime. Because every one of those are many, many steps to get them taken out as comments from the auditor.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. And no, no worries and welcome. And thank you for everyone in the Board of Trustees and the staff who actually helped with those efforts, so.
Right. It was a lot of work. Molly, you were a part of that. Initially, right? You were.
Yep, I go way back.
Oh, there you are, Molly. I didn't see you. Hello.
When structure was being brought into this whole fiscal part. And Kathy, you were there as well. And Bob Magierneck.
Yep, right.
So.
Alice, thank you. Thank you for that background. It's appreciated. Your efforts are appreciated, even though I haven't reached out to you on a regular basis. We'll change that going forward.
No worries. No problem. Thank you. Well, nice meeting everyone who I haven't met before and good to see all the faces of people that I have known for quite some time.
Nice to see you again.
You as well.
Your son is doing well.
Thank you so much. Hello.
Bye, Jaime.
Bye, guys.
So the, the special meeting has a special agenda and we're going to go into the strategic plan topic momentarily. I just wanted to give a little background why I put the statement that I did into the minutes because, and the agenda. Because basically after our last meeting, I was trying to figure out what it was that I wasn't able to, to say, because I hadn't had my thoughts organized, that the conversation on the plan was, it was detailed. It went in many directions. The observations and comments people had, I think, were great, but it took me a while to put it together. And I just felt that if I could, I'd stand on the roof and just shout this out to everyone, because I don't know if everybody in the community understands how far we've gotten with the plan. So I hope that you've had a chance to read Karen's, should I call it an update? Many pages, many details. I hope that gives you some sense of accomplishment and assurance that this is not just a document, but a living, breathing document. And Karen, if I can, turn it over to you. And Michael, if you're ready.
Sure. So at the last meeting, we had, I had asked Michael to put together a proposal for us for staff training. That was one of the things that was of utmost importance in my mind. And also something that I thought we could manage to do in a discreet period of time. But we had a very wide-ranging conversation last time. And I realized that the board would like to have a more, a bigger discussion about how we would best use Michael. And so, and Michael and I had this conversation that we may need to shift what we have him focus on with us. So I guess the, probably the most productive thing, if you agree, Michael, is for me to sort of turn it over to you to possibly have a conversation with the board. Does that make sense?
Sure. And because I have some preliminary questions that might help us, as you know, in the, in the strategic planning process, you know, I have these thought-provoking questions. So thank you for sharing the information. So that, that would be helpful. Before I do that, I just want to say hello to all of the board who I've worked with and then get a chance to do that. And then to, I think it's Megan? Okay, because I gotta put my glasses on. I don't think I met Megan. So let me just say hello and hi and.
Hello, nice to meet you, Michael.
So when Karen and I spoke and she said, would you come on? I said, absolutely. And from the conversation that you had, it sounds to me as though there's an opportunity for us to take a step back and just look at what you as a board want, that you may need more of or want differently. So we can then say, this is how best to utilize Michael going forward. The work that I did around training was very specific. But that might not be what will best address what the board feels it needs for itself and for the library. Having read the progress report, I think the progress report is very detailed. And I didn't get a chance to talk with Karen about this, but the only thing that I would probably add that might be helpful for the board, Karen and Molly, is some kind of performance rating against the, the outcomes. So maybe just as you go through all of those details, maybe add what, where you are on track with each goal, where you are, excuse me, where you have achieved the goal, where you are on track and where you may be off track. And in my previous work in doing this, that can even be color-coded. So things that are, are aligned to be achieved or has been achieved, you kind of color-code that as green, you've achieved it. And things that are off, on track, but you haven't done yet, you, you color-code that as yellow. And this is maybe an easy visual way for board members when they don't have time to look through the details to say, okay, we got 10 things that we're looking at and we got five that are achieved or look too soon to be achieved. And then we got about three things that are on track, no real issues there. And then we got a couple of things that are off-track and we got those in red. And then that might be a helpful way to help the board kind of summarize its thoughts around certain things. So that's, that's my input on the, the progress report. And if the board remembers, when we put together the plan, we did talk about the, the leadership team providing to the board a progress on a regular basis. So maybe the other question is the frequency of the reporting that might address some of the concerns as well. But what, but for this meeting, what I'd like to do is just take a step back and hear from the board members. Now that you've had a chance to read this, I understand, I see, I also looked at the survey that Karen sent. What is it that you believe the team needs and you need in order to not only execute the plan, but really aspirationally get to where we want to be in three years? That, that you feel maybe you're not sure if you're, you're, you're making the kind of progress you want to make. And so I would just like to listen. So when you had the questions, let me hear firsthand, what were some of those questions? Because Karen and I didn't go through all of those in detail.
Well, for, for an overview, I would say that we get to read and listen to the directors report at every regular monthly meeting. And the material is parallels what we got in the progress report. But in my mind, it hadn't really been separated or maybe that's not the word. I didn't see a distinction to what was, what progress was being done regarding the implementation of the plan compared to progress from everyday functions and responsibilities. So I don't want to say that the reporting was inadequate, but to me, it just wasn't distinctive.
And that, and that, that's not uncommon. Sometimes you fall into reporting on the operational progress and you don't distinguish between the plan.
And I also didn't have it in my mind, a clear distinction of the successes and the, the the efforts that reached completion versus those that were stalled, stymied or put aside.
And that, that map would be addressed by adding the dimensions that I mentioned at the start, some kind of performance progress rating. Not just given a report, but being able to quickly see where you're on track, where you're off track and, and what are the what, what are you going to do to mitigate if you're not on track? Other, other questions, other concerns that were expressed? I think Amanda, you, are you speaking? You're on mute if you were.
Yeah, I'm unmuting myself.
Hi, hi, Amanda.
When we looked at your proposal, one of the, well, I want to start off by saying, I really understand from the work that I used to do that you know, always need to bring the staff along with you, especially when you're making any changes. It is so essential that the staff are committed and understand and have the same language to address whatever is the change that's about to happen. So I really believe the training, the staff is, is essential. However, what I was concerned about is in like goal three, two, one of the, one of the things that wasn't evident in the proposal that you made is the, where the staff is as you are going, walking in it with your proposal. It's like there must be something that they bring to the table. And has that analysis been done? It's, you know, I think in that goal three, two, Karen broke it down as A and B. And in B, it says, we're going to address staff training needs. But did you do that prior to making the proposal that you presented for the future training?
So the direct answer is no.
Okay.
The direct answer is no. We discussed a level setting or calibration to, to, to determine where the staff is. to 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 determine where the staff is versus where they're going to go. But relative to scope and budget and all of that, that wasn't something that could fit within what we were working with. So that would be and be something that would be the best first step. If the if you feel like you don't have a good sense of where the staff is. So the other answer to the question is, is an assessment necessary? Or do we go by the leadership of the Australian Public Library that says our staff really doesn't have a a good foundation around unconscious bias, X, Y, Z. So those are the kinds of things that Karen and I talked about, but it wasn't based on any kind of formal assessment.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, and let and let me say this about the proposal for tonight. And Karen and I talked about this. I am absolutely um, okay with taking a step back and saying, training may not be what should, what we should be doing next. So let's not get bogged down in the in that proposal if the board believes we should be going in a different direction. For instance, we talked about staff training, Karen Karen and I. But I also remember when we first met and we were doing the plan, your this board uh, minus Megan talked about the board having a level of training. And maybe maybe we need to think about that in addition to the staff, which again, I gave Karen something separate for the board as well. So what I'm saying to you as a as a team, what is it that you think is most critical in terms of helping the plan be executed? Karen and I landed on, in order for the plan to be executed, we need to elevate, enhance the competencies of the staff relative to diversity, equity, inclusion, not just in language, but in actual execution of certain things. The staff needs to needs to have engagement around the challenging questions. The staff needs to really know that they're going to make mistakes along the way in talking to diverse groups of people and community outreach. And when that happens, how do you not lose traction? How do you not lose credibility because you have a misstep along the way? All of that helps the plan get actualized.
Thank you.
I think for me, what I kind of just wanted to know a little bit was how much of the plan has really been implemented? Um, you know, because we, some of us were able to work on a plan with you, some of the staff and in the in management level. So I guess I was just trying to understand like how much of it has actually, that's my thing, how much has it have been implemented before I guess starting a refresher or more training? Because I guess it's like, you know, try see, you know, see some of the shortcomings, if you may, if that's the right word to use. And then kind of then they would go, you know, and would work with you further or more enhancement of what kind of, you know, say, you know, I've worked on a plan, this is working, that's not working. And then, you know, you would come in and work with them. So I guess that was my just thing of how long was the plan being worked on? And do we have, I guess, uh, just a gauge of, you know, what worked thus far, what didn't? You know, so then we know like where reinforcement is needed.
And I and I can't answer your question because again, my engagement stopped at the completion of the plan. So if we take a step back and understand that, again, we went through that six months. And this and this was driven primarily by budget, I believe. I don't, I think along the way, I I earned the credibility of the team. Uh, but when we looked at the end of getting the plan to approval by the board and now it's time to execute, I've done this work where I've stayed on with teams to help them execute and report out. But there wasn't a budget to do that. So I couldn't answer your question. As a matter of fact, again, I looked at the report Karen sent me so I could be ready to say, give you the feedback that I gave tonight, the plan, you're getting good information. It sounds like it could be more frequent and it should be separate from operational results. They may overlap, there may be intersectionality there, but there should be a plan specific, a a long range plan, report each board meeting that's different from the operations where you're highlighting again, where we're on track, where we're on track, what are we going to mitigate, what are we celebrating? Right? Because you should be celebrating milestones and achievements. And how are we celebrating and how are we communicating the things that we celebrated? So that's that sounds like maybe it's not happening on a consistent basis. So that would be one of the ways that this board might feel diff- a little bit differently about the plan. But my role in that hasn't continued because it stopped when we completed and had approval.
So I understand what you're saying. At this point, the the question becomes, do we want to um, support the the proposal we gave us and let you take that direction? Or you're asking us, if that's not acceptable, what direction are we asking you to take at this time?
Yes, that's the the latter is really because again, it and well, actually, it's not an either or, except for from a budgetary perspective. Because you could say, Michael, given the work that you've done with us, we want to engage you for the next six months. We want to engage you for the next. Again, I'm not pitch, I'm not, this is not a pitch, just saying, the plan is a three year plan. But if you said, look, how can we work out, we want you to partner with us through the completion of the plan, which is three years. What does that look like? Can you give us some numbers around how that would look? I'm happy to do that. That's a longer commitment. But again, as partners, you know that this is what that look would look like. That means I would come on every board meeting like I was doing along the six months. Karen and I and Molly would be working on, how do we separate? And then when we're reporting out, I wouldn't report on any of the operational stuff. I will be reporting out with Karen and Molly on the plan. And I would be helping them report out on the, again, where we're on track, where we're on track, we talked about what we're going to do to mitigate that. Then I would be consulting along the way and in in the execution. An example, we have in there executing, Karen and I talked about this, executing the part of the plan about community outreach and engagement. I could add some value there, but again, that might then drive the staff. And the and the biggest thing that the board has to be concerned here is when you get someone on board to help with the execution of the plan, then that does create a bit of tug and pull on staff. Because then when when I get hired, it, you know, I get hired to then say, hey, Karen and Molly, okay, we got to meet, we got to look at the next tier and we got to be ready for the next board meeting. And then I they don't report to me, but as a consultative partner, I'm kind of helping kind of keep, keep, keep the eye on the prize there. That's how that works. Or has it, how it has worked with other organizations that have worked on strategic planning.
So if I follow you, the the reason that the proposal that we did receive was really focused on DEI is because that was the 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 focus for the next stage of the relationship.
That was a focus based on my, but but Karen and I talked about that was doable within the scope of everything that's going on in Karen's role, what she thought was manageable and doable to get staff trained. But but let me be clear, Karen and I talked about big, big and more than that. But and and then again, we had to come back to the reality of budget and what she and she thought the budget could support over six months, eight months, a year, what have you. So we in in and not in defense, but just in all transparency, with Karen and I started macro and we worked worked out to 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 training.
Okay.
Okay.
So Michael, I'm not sure that I have a question, but uh, you know, I do want to make a comment in uh, in regard to, you know, the conversation that the board had that sort of brought you here tonight. Uh, first of all, Karen, I thought you did an excellent job of putting together the document that you were showing what work has been done that fits into the strategic plan. I thought that, you know, there was great detail and actually, I really felt that this is the type of document that we need in order to meet the needs of the discussion we had about um, evaluations of yourself, of the board of because you can clearly see what has been accomplished in a particular timeline. And that's what I was talking about. So uh, my concern was that um, while there was great detail in the reports that you provided to us, I felt that it was backwards. It was, you took a strategic plan and inserted into the strategic plan, the work that's been done and accomplished here in the library over, you know, however many months it was. Versus the strategic plan and the things that were done that were that are spec- were specifically designed for that DEI plan. If if the library had not had a DEI plan done, you would have had those same accomplishments anyway. And so in order to design specific goals that, you know, meet the, you know, the measurements and the goals of the DEI plan, to to me, those are different. They would be different. They would be new. They wouldn't be the ones that were already put forth, you know, the prior year. So um, my own experience of having been i- in a corporate environment where actually something pretty ugly happened and they had to hit the ground running to implement this type of 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 plan, um. The plan hit the ground running where people were. And so it wasn't an issue of pe- people being trained to understand because the first thing that had to be produced was where was each and every person at. And you know, however that evaluation comes up, you know, um, and at that particular um, um, job, it actually ended up becoming part of the evaluation, your job evaluation. All jobs don't do that. You know, they don't, they don't evaluate whether you're, you know, you have a DEI lens and if you're living and working by that, but some jobs do. So um, maybe one of the questions that the board has to answer is, is this going to be part of an evaluation for employees? Yes or no? One of the things that I walked away with with from the document that you created, Karen, was that there is a clear need for um, certain positions that we currently do not have. So I definitely, I definitely saw that and I agree with it a hundred percent. That there's just jobs that have outgrown having one person do it. Or no person do it, like HR. So um,
Did you hear something?
My concern about um, that I also expressed the last time was that.
Let me just, let me just interrupt quickly, just for a second. I'm going to change my location. Uh, give me, give me, so I'm gonna go off screen and go on mute for a second, okay?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay, uh, I'm back. Sorry about that. Uh, one of the things about working remotely, especially with family, I thought that they were going to be out for the rest of the, at least until the board, the meeting was over and they came back early. Um, Shanti, uh, we're lucky, wait, go ahead. And then I I do want to, I do want to have a little bit of response to what you're saying when you're when.
Sure. So the other piece is that i- in in my mind, from, you know, conversations we had, have had and you know, since you you know, you've been gone, you know, I get the distinct impression that not ev- the the entire board is not on the same page. And that the board doesn't have the same understandings or beliefs or um, you know, um, desire to make certain changes and being able to produce the evidence for that from the board. And and that's, that's really, you know, my first concern is about the board versus, you know, the training um, of the staff, because if the board is not, you know, in the same place and if we're a, we're not on the same level of humanity with each other, then it's not going to work in my eyes. And and maybe that's something that you can help us with. That's how I see my, you know, my concerns.
Um, so I'm, I don't know if I would say it really is a pushback, but let me just kind of re uh, remind us again, when we started the plan, so to your point about backing back into some of the things that would have been done or we intentionally, if you go back to the six months, when actually it was seven months when I, when when I, we actually started working, we built into this plan, some of the things that you're saying you would have been working on anyway. So I just want to be clear. If you're saying they would have been working on, we we knew that, we knew intentionally, we were going to be building into the plan some of the low hanging fruit success because we would be working on it.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so you, that's that's by design.
Mm-hmm.
We, so we we did diversify or did go after some things differently, but for example, when I looked at the outcome, we knew that there was still work to be completed on the interior of the of the library.
Mm-hmm.
It made perfect sense to put it in there because we had to execute it. And we made, and we figured out along the way, for those who were on the the um, long range planning committee, we said, where are we and what what are the things holding that up? Oh, we needed to get more funding or we needed to build a relationship with the council person or whatever. So we built into the plan, so you're not wrong, but it was in the plan. We we built it so that it would happen and happen maybe more quickly or maybe happen with more funding, but we built those in. So some of the things that you're hearing reported on were intentionally baked in the plan it to happen because we wanted to have in the first two quarters of the plan, execution and success we could cele- celebrate. Okay, that's that's number one. So that was intentional. When, and and you mentioned in your experiences in the corporate arena and my work with strategic planning groups, we've always built in, where can we have some low hanging fruit success? So that when we report to senior leadership, they can all say, you're doing something. Because we hadn't seen that executed before the plan. So that's that's number one, it's not by mistake. Uh, a- again, and then relative to the board question, I think this goes back to when we very first met. We said the same things, Shanti, that you said tonight, what do, what do you need as a board? So that the board models this DEI commitment, that the staff sees it and knows it and not just through seeing Karen and Molly, but knowing that the board is that. And we had that conversation, but again, from a budgetary perspective, if if we go back to the very first proposal I gave, I gave a proposal for engaging over a full year, if you remember. And then budget would allow for that at the at the levels that I offered. Uh, so I think that's where where, again, back to Matt's question, what is it that you feel as a board is really the next most critical phase so that you as a board can say, you know what? Our three year plan, we know the staff is going to work to execute. But because we're going to spend some time as a board. But because we're gonna spend some time as a board. Focusing on our own training that may mirror training that the staff is gonna get, we're gonna be aligned that way. That's, that's what I think the board has to figure out and as I said, I'm happy to give Karen and the board. Some other options to consider. If that's what I'm hearing you say that you really wanna look at, so if we're gonna gauge Michael, let's engage Michael in a way that we can get the most out of the engagement. We feel good about the plan, but let's engage him over the next six months, twelve months, eighteen months, whatever it is. In a way that we can really feel as though we're, we're moving this three year plan to execution and by, and while we're doing that. We're all getting what we need to get. In terms of us coming together to really embody and model. Our commitment to diversity, equity and inclusion. And so that I give that back to the board, that's what you guys have to decide and then give that back to Karen to give to me or give it to me and then I'll come back and say. Okay, guys, this is what I think that looks like. Anyone else?
So if, if I can just, um. Process my understanding of where we are and, and your, um. Comments just now, I mean. When we retained you, I mean, the outcomes were what we were looking for, you know, what's the vision, what's the blueprint of, of what this will look like? And, um, our mission statement, um, you know, what, what will our branding now look like within a D E I lens? And you know, from. Uh, an H R perspective, I'm thinking, okay, so what are the best practices we should be looking at? Like Matt had mentioned in the monthly report, um, you know, where we can track some of those activities. You know, how do we track this work, how do we identify improvements? Uh, how do we identify areas that could be better? And you know, and how can we, um, identify outcomes? You know, what was successful, what wasn't successful? So I'm sitting here listening to you just now and your remarks recently and thinking, okay, so we're seven months in. You know, what happens in the next five months so we can like have the first, um, benchmark, year one. This is where we are now, year two, you know, what is our progress, what are our trends? Year three, you know, how much of this plan have we successfully executed? And then, you know, when we're looking at each of those annual benchmarks, you know, what are the measurements, what are the instruments or templates? We're gonna be looking at like in hiring and community outreach, um. And, and, and the other facets of this blueprint that we, you know, cobble together.
And I, I remind the board that one of the things we did look at. Again, I think we took a step back because it might have, it may have felt a little bit complicated, but. I did give a template for a long range plan dashboard. That would actually do what you just described, Cecilia, if you remember that, so we looked at a dashboard model. To say, this is how you will track and see the progress now again. Karen did a great job giving you the details, but it's not, it, it's not necessarily in a dashboard in which. In, in, in a way that you could even put the dashboard on the website and any board member at any point could go to that dashboard and say. Oh, this is where they are, so it's kind of enables the board to be more engaged with the plan. By just going periodically and going to the website and saying, okay, here's the long range plan dashboard, now the dashboard. I, I think what Karen did was probably take cons- parts of what I, what that template was in preparing her report for you, at least conceptually. Cause that's how I looked at it when I saw it, it had elements of that, but it's not in the language of again, as we said. Where are we on the plan through seven months? What are the key deliverables? What are the, what are the challenges that we face, what came out of, what's the impact, so remember that the, the, uh. When we talked about the impact has to be part of what you're reporting on because when you do something, you want to know what the impact is internally. And truthfully, what's the impact externally, given that you're a service organization? So all of that to say, um, there's an opportunity for that, the template that's being used to report to you. To be enhanced and again, that, that's something that I'm happy to kind of revisit with Karen and her team. But, um, I think that's, that's the reporting part, Cecilia, that you're talking about, that the big, the bigger question in my mind again is. You have a resource. If you believe the resource that you have in me can be helpful in ensuring. That the living document is executed. Over the next three years, then what does that look like? And that's the question that is on the table in my mind that I'm hearing. And, and, and I'm happy to shape that. According to. What your preferences are and within whatever budget restraint you have. Uh, one of the things I keep telling Karen is, you know, I enjoy the work that I've done with you. I'm gonna be flexible as, as much as I can. And I understand that you have some, you know, you don't, you just don't have amounts of money to throw out, out as consultants on reasonable. But in order for us to have a level of satisfaction, we do have to have clarity on what are the things that are most important? Operationally. You know, we settled in on training, but that may not be. So again, there's a couple of different ways to look at it, engagement over six months, looking at that as on a retained basis. Uh, engagement and then that six months, I'm continuing to work with the team to execute the plan while we're also doing some training. That could be one model. It could be just specifically about executing the plan and reporting to the board, that could be another one, so there's a variety of ways we can do it. But what's most important to you as a board?
That makes sense, any other questions or comments?
I, I do have one more that Michael, you. Made me think about, sorry, Matt, um.
No, I wasn't wrapping up, I was trying to motivate you.
We were, as a board, there were a number of us who were really engaged in the, um, writing of the plan. And one thing that, um, feels almost uncomfortable to me is that now we are the receiver of information. Rather than being engaged in. In the process. And that's probably the position that a board normally takes. But I almost feel like we have really created, um. A, a very, very important task for us as a library to see through. But at the same time, we're not engaged in the process anymore. And I, I find that difficult. Because, you know, I, I want, I feel like the board should be more engaged than we are. And maybe that's not appropriate, but I just wanted to make that comment.
Did you want me to, did you want me to comment to that or did?
Please.
So, well, again, it comes full circle, thank you for saying that, there, I've done work with boards, nonprofit. And for profit boards, quite honestly, years ago. And which, and on the for prophesied, it's the exact opposite feeling of what you're expressing. We, we, we got a resource, we got the plan done, staff go and execute and keep us informed. We got, because profit boards are filled with people who say, I got all this other stuff, I don't have time to be in the weeds of executing a plan. A lot of times on nonprofit boards, I get the sentiment Amanda that you just had because of the work that gets built, that they, they're hands on in building the plan. They, the caution, the cautionary tale is, if you, as a board get involved in the execution of it. Do you really have the chops and the time to do it? Because this is the heavy lifting time. So a- again, uh, we can find a way to have board members be involved in the execution. One of them, again, is the community outreach, that one, that goal that we built was really designed with the board in mind because it really can't be executed without the board. The board is really closer to the relationships we have and the relationships we wanna have. So we gotta have the board involved in that, but that goes back to what are we prioritizing and what do we want? If we are re-engaging Michael, how are we re-engaging Michael as an example, again, Karen and I talked about the community outreach one and we. That can be dicey because if we're reaching out to diverse communities that we don't have relationships with. Then it might be some missteps, there likely are gonna be some missteps. So just, just as an example, so I, that wasn't to say yay or nay, it really is. Be careful what you ask for, uh, if, if you really want, and that doesn't mean it has to be the whole board, Amanda, I don't think you were suggesting. This is how you would feel, and I don't think it's, your comment was, every board member has to sign on to execute. All of these things, so for the board members who want to, we certainly should find a way to help them be more, um, tentatively involved. Okay.
Well, if there are no other questions or comments, um, it appears that we have to. Go ahead, Alice.
Um, I'm curious, Michael, when you first had this conversation with Karen, when Karen. Shared with us your proposal for the staff development. My first question to her was what about the board? Because I don't feel that the board has. You know, engaged as an entire board, many of our board members were, as Amanda shared, very involved. In the initial phases of creating a plan. What did you have on, in mind to do with the board?
Okay, uh, well, let me, I'll give you the reader's digest version, because I, I, I did do a proposal for the board's development, one of which.
Love to see that.
Okay, well, one of, one of the, one of the, the starting point, as I mentioned to Karen, as I said, it would be good to do, especially if you're. If, if we're over the COVID concern to have a board retreat where we actually build up, what is the board going to? How is the board gonna be involved in, in, in helping the, the vision of this plan be executed? So taking the board away for a day, full day retreat and just mapping that out in my facilitating the board. And then afterwards, that would, out of that would come. Some of the things that Shanti just mentioned, where are we aligned, where are we not aligned? What do we need training on, what do we, it's not a matter of training, but what do we need to be able to call each other on? Because we're not behaving in a way that demonstrates our commitment to diversity and equity and inclusion. All of those things would be beneficial to have a objective party walk the board through. Because they're going to be, those are the kind of conversations, when we talk about challenging conversation, that's the challenging conversation.
We call them courageous.
Courageous, challenging, all those are the things, but it helps, it helps to have an impartial person. So that they can help, they can help you process all of the stuff that comes out in those kind of retreats.
Could we see that proposal?
Sure, I'll, I'll, I'll pull it back up, Karen, I'll, I'll, you don't have to dig for it, I'll find it and I'll send it back to you and you get it out to the board. But yeah, she, Karen had asked me for something for the board and it was a, again. We, we backed away from it because we said, well, the board will have to figure out from a budget perspective if there's a budget to do that.
Right, I, I really love to see that because that was one of my very first questions to Karen was what about the board? So, and, and the, the board sets the tone for the organization, so I think that that worked.
Well, give me, give me a day, uh, again, I'm down here in Midway, Georgia where, uh. Internet connection is not always great, but I do have my computer, let me make sure I can find it, I'm gonna touch base with Karen tomorrow. And then we'll get that out to you, I wanna make sure I get the latest version, but again, that's just a. Think about it, as I said, a thought stimulator, don't think of it as an absolute definitive thing, just a way that we were thinking about the board's needs, okay?
And it's been a long time since the board has done something like that, um, I think that many of the. Sitting board members have not ever done that on the library board. And I think that that's important and we have a brand new board member too, in Megan, and I think that that's. Would be very important work for us.
One of the exercises that I do with boards when I do that work is we, from a D E I perspective is. We, we delve into where we have, uh, alignment around our thoughts, not, not the definitions in the plan by themselves. But we, we, we get into where we have, um. Really alignment and how we think and feel about diversity and where we may have some blind spots and some disconnects. And that's one of the, one of the aspects of that kind of work with the board. And it's revealing when people see that, we, we say that we are. But then we may not be behaving that and it goes into microaggressions and how. People may not even understand that when you're having board meetings. You may be behaving in a way and saying some things and nobody calls each other on it, but it happens. So, um, happy to, happy to, I'll find that and I'll, I'll reconnect with Karen tomorrow and, and we'll have something out to you by the, by, by Friday at the latest, okay?
That's great, thank you.
So I don't know if there are any other questions, but, but again, I will, I'll just, in my comments on, I, I'd love to work with you. Um, looking forward to it, but I really wanna make sure that the time that I spend. With the board and the staff, however you wanna engage me, um, that it's, it's, it's in a way that you're gonna feel that you're getting the best. Uh, from me and you're getting what you need, that most, but that's most, what's most important that you get what you need as a board, so. Um, the, the reporting out on the plan doesn't just become a perfunctory thing. We don't need formative outcome, we need substantial and substantive outcomes. Karen, does that cover pretty much what you wanted me to do with the board tonight?
Yes, Michael, thank you.
Okay, Matt?
Yes.
Megan, you don't know this, but all of the board members have direct access to me. So after tonight, and even though I'm not on any kind of retainer contract, uh, when I build relationships, I believe in a relationship, so again. All the board members to know that they could pick up the, even without having, uh, being formally engaged. I'm, I'm, I'm now a partner. So, you know, if you feel like there's something that you'd like to kind of, let me just chat with Michael about it. Uh, don't worry, I'm not gonna be sending Karen a bill for it, uh, this is how you maintain relationships, so. Again, I, I remind everybody about that out there, again, I reached out to, um, the guy in Boston. Uh, COVID has, he's actually out for a few days, um, in isolation because he was exposed. But as soon as I get in touch with Daryl, we're gonna get that, so I, I only mentioned. I'll theme on that because she's actually taking me up on something, I'm trying to connect her with a contact divine, okay?
Thank you.
So let's, 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 um, let's keep relationships going and, uh, we'll work it out.
By the way, Michael, you're in Georgia, I'm out in San Francisco.
Yeah, seven, seventy plus degrees and I'll be going home on Friday and as much as I'd love being down here with my wife's dad, I'm ready to go home.
Yeah, and I'm going home on Saturday, but I'm not ready to go home.
Yeah, so thanks, thanks again, uh, Karen, again, I'll, I'll send you a note sometime tomorrow, see if I can catch up with you and at a minimum. At worst case scenario, again, uh, looking before. I get on the plane on Friday, maybe by midday to have something to you so you can get to the board, okay?
Thank you, Michael.
Thanks.
travels.
That, thanks, take care of, oh. The outside, I was at the library, I missed many of you, I saw Althea and I saw Shanti there. And, and, and Molly, the event that was in the, uh, auditorium, Matt, oh. It was a great event with Austin's own. He was great and I got a picture and I followed up with the brother and it was a great event and, and by the way, Shanti, again, as I said to Karen. That event is one of the ways to demonstrate how we're moving to being more inclusive, yes, it was. Um, the historian's connection that happened, but the library hosted it. And so again, that's, that's, that's a check on the box against the plan that we are demonstrating. Our commitment to diversity, equity and inclusion by having someone come and talk a real talk about. That topic, that was a great event, it, it should have been better attended, but it was a great event.
Ben, what's this?
The, uh, Rob Embriano, um, amend talk.
Yeah, he, he did it on, uh, the amend, which the series, like, again, if you have not watched the series, watch the series.
It's, it's on Netflix and Summer Soul, he also did that.
Yeah, well, Summer Soul was, uh, Soul was done also with, uh, Questlove.
Right.
Right, right, yeah. Okay. Good night.
Thank you.
Good night, Michael, thank you.
So we should take a moment, uh, before moving on to the other topics to kind of get our bearings. I think we're at the point now where we should consider if it's enough to. Proceed with Michael under Karen's direction that we focus on D E I as he proposed. Or perhaps it, this lends one or two more options that we should consider. Before we change the topic tonight and that is, should we ask Michael to take on the role of training in D E I? should we ask Michael to take on the role of training in DEI, but carving out a secondary role of helping establish a status dashboard of the accomplishments of the plan's execution and helping, having him help Karen report on the execution and the delivery of the plan, because I never envisioned, and I don't know, I didn't follow it closely enough, maybe. I didn't envision that Karen would have to carry all of the implementation, the reporting and everything else on her and Molly's shoulders. I think that it would be appropriate to bring Michael in to help us, to help her and Molly deliver that to the board. So I think the idea of that status dashboard makes a lot of sense. And the floor is open for any comments or questions.
Is this during a retreat? Is that like all part of the same thing, or that's just one aspect?
I, I think that's one aspect, but it's an unformed thought in my mind, it's just a sentiment I got that it would be helpful for all of us if Michael's responsibility went beyond the DEI training and included maybe the, a retreat for the, I don't like that phrase, it sounds like I'm wasting money. Training for the board and helping the execution and reporting of the plan. Ending his role, is what I'm saying. If anybody thinks that's a bad idea, please share.
I think that we should wait until he provides some other configuration of what it is that we just discussed, because I don't think we should make a decision on something that we, first of all, my experience has been that consultants don't do the work that an employee would do. That's my experience, so I'm not, that's why I'm not really sure, like, what you're saying when you say hire him to do something for Karen, I, I'm not sure what you're saying.
Well, it, it came up from Cecilia's input that he said that he stopped short of doing the dashboard. Something where the, the board can, the board of trustees can look at and see the progress of the plan and its implementation. So I thought that potentially that this would support Karen and Molly's efforts, and someone else would be responsible for communicating it to us. And he could add that in a proposal, and we could dissect that for the purpose of conversation.
Now, how long would he be maintaining this dashboard? Because when I, when I, what came to my mind with dashboard was, he would kind of create the framework and the rubric, and those who were doing certain things would be either reporting or, you know, that type of situation, because in my mind, if DEI in this framework is going to be our new normal, I think that it should go to department heads and others who are doing the work and they fill out a form and kind of the way we get a, you know, the reports listed. If they have it, you know, submitted by a certain day, then we kind of see what people have done in retrospect to that plan.
That's what I assume.
Because I feel like doing that is like, I mean, we all like Michael, but I just don't feel like, you know, we don't want to just keep a consultant forever and ever, I think that if this is going to be our, this is going to be the direction we're going and implementing, or maybe either a new part in our report like he mentioned. And then, you know, there's something, you know, Google Doc, shared file, and you know, this, this speaks to the plan, this speaks to the framework. It's handed in, and then when we get our materials for our meeting, we're able to see it. Or it's somewhere that we're able to see what's going on in retrospect to DEI and plan.
And, and that would be in lieu of the reports that normally are written by department heads, because that's the same information, it should be the same information.
But even if it is, I think that it should maybe be separated, and maybe if a particular activity or something, if it doubles, you may, it may have to go in their general report, but then maybe go in this DEI section so that we kind of can gaze when we speak directly to a part of implementing the report, we get to see it separate from their monthly report.
Yeah, I don't think it replaces the narrative, I think the narrative is still there, but this is the DEI report card. You know, this is how we did last month, this is the stuff that we can check off that we've been addressing.
I guess that, that's where my confusion is, is that if, if you're, if you're doing things with a DEI lens, where's the separation?
I think the idea is that everything we do will use that lens to some extent.
It, it either is or it isn't. I don't know, but, that's what I'm saying, I'm very confused about, it's like, you know, where's the separation? Why is there, you know, a separate report? If you're changing the way you're thinking, changing the way you're doing things, then that's the way you're doing it. Not that you still have some other way over here on the side that arbitrarily the, the decision is made, oh, well, we're not going to use the lens for that, because we're doing it this way over here. I, I don't, that's where, that's why, you know, my, my, I thought that he should be involved in a retreat, and the retreat could happen in the library, it doesn't have to be somewhere off premises, that in, in order, so that we all have the same idea of what's supposed to be happening, because right now, I don't, I don't feel that way.
Well, I, I think to, to address what you're saying about reporting on different activities and whether or not they're done through a DEI lens or not, comes back to an observation made earlier that Karen's report didn't really distinguish for us how things are being done differently, because the, the activities that are taking place are being done anyway, regardless of whether we had that plan or not. So that's why, that's what prompted me to, to look at it and try to create a means of identifying differently, but I think I was splitting hairs. And that, I think is unnecessary. So I think what it comes back to is that the information that we got on the progress report was what we really needed. And that the information that the progress report contains is very detailed, and I think that it's the right direction. I also think that there are so many opportunities for the staff to grow under this DEI lens and, and to improve upon the way the library serves as the community that I don't know how to change it. So that's why I asked all these questions, whether Michael would do more or do it differently. I don't know if it's enough that we get the detailed progress report more frequently. And if that's so, then we might do, as you said, Shanti, is wait. I don't think Michael's going to come back with another proposal till we give him a little more direction, which is really why I was asking the questions, I guess. Karen, is that the impression he gave us? That he's looking for more detail before he gives us a different proposal?
I think he's going to have a conversation with me later this week to sort of talk about what we took from tonight's meeting and give, the way I understood it was he would give some options of various different ways of going about engaging him. Whether it's a board retreat plus staff training, or like a loose retainer agreement over a period of time where he helps us with execution. My impression was that he, he and I would discuss some of the options that we talked about tonight and put a price tag to that.
So taking that into consideration, does anyone have any any feelings or conclusions regarding our waiting until our next meeting, which is the 21st of this month, just a few weeks away to discuss this further?
So we'll have a proposal by then to consider and vote on.
That's what I'm thinking.
Yeah.
Because the last thing I want to do is give the impression that this is rushed or hurried, and that we're not taking out time to look at it. But I did want to spend a few more minutes on just getting our heads into the same timeframe that we're willing to wait and see what comes by the 21st of March.
Yeah.
Karen, it makes sense?
My sense wasn't that he was going to create something new, but that he was going to go back to his original proposal that he shared with you, and you two mutually, Karen sort of pared it down to the staff work. And so we'll see what work he had proposed to do with the board as well.
Yeah, that proposal was sent to the board back in the fall, we didn't discuss it in any great detail, but it was sent, so, but I can certainly resend that.
That would be great, thank you. I'm sorry that we didn't have a detailed conversation on that.
We, we rejected it out of hand because of the expense, we wanted to contain the expense upfront and focus and have him focus on the plan. And we thought that we would reconsider the, the board training down the road. So at this time, if there are no additional questions or comments on that topic, we can move on to the HVAC and the buildings and grounds. And there was a meeting with an architect. And Karen, I would like to turn it over to you if I can.
I'm going to turn it over to Molly.
And Molly will turn it over to you.
I will try to keep my summary brief and concise. In the, in the past two months, January and February, we've met with the Buildings and Grounds Committee, and Karen and I have met with two architectural firms, but individual representatives of those firms. One, Dattner, we already have a proposal from them and have worked with them in the past on some concepts for reimagining the building. We talked to him about some of the existing challenges that have come up and challenges that have gotten more pressing, and talked about whether or not as a firm, you know, they were interested in sort of examining and shepherding us through our many challenges. Then we also talked to another firm, Lothrup. And Lothrup has a different, Dattner ultimately said no, they design and, and build. And that's lovely, but we need a little bit more than that, we need guidance, and I, Megan, to catch you up on some of this, not only is our building, you know, aging to a certain degree, it was built in 2007, but we also have some substantial site issues that we're trying to address, and some of them we just have to continue gathering data about till we get to a place where we can make some firm decisions, the retaining wall. But we're at a point where so many of these factors and building items like needing a new roof, needing new pavement of our parking lot, having to, you know, decommission a well that has died in addition to other wells dying. You know, we just have this very complex package, and one of the interesting things about Lothrup as an architectural firm is they do specialize in libraries, they have a whole wing that specializes in libraries. They are working with a lot of libraries in our areas, so we can get some very current recommendations and obsess and information about, you know, how they work with people, good recommendations, good feedback. But they also do a kind of, they have a whole wing that does forensic architecture, and this is where I think it's interesting to us as a group, and if any of the board members who are part of the committee want to weigh in on this, they, they look at situations where there might have been negligence, malfeasance, oversight. And they, they pursue those issues. They may find out that there's nothing, everything's fine, everybody did what they were supposed to do. Or they may find that, you know, people did throw, you know, a bunch of trash that should have been in a landfill into the ground under our parking lot. And then part of that is they use scientific methods to do that, they use ground penetrating radar, they, they go back and you know, go through all of the documentation, and if we don't have the documentation, they pursue the firms who did the work, who should have the original documentation. Obviously, none of this is going to be free, but it does bring up a point that then if we do need to pursue former contractors or firms, you know, for compensation and legal issues, this is the firm that does that. This is the firm that goes and testifies in court that somebody has to take responsibility for this, and this is who. What we've asked Lothrup to do is give us basically, they're, they have a, a package, I guess I would call it, Karen, correct me if I'm wrong, that's a sort of like walkthrough assessment. They will come to your building and walk through it with you and you know, staff members who, you know, are key. And they will point out what they see. Now, obviously, they're not digging behind things, but they will let you know, they'll stand on your roof and say, you can see that there are holes in the membrane on your roof. You can see as we walk through this building, here's a crack, that kind of crack isn't a concern. The kind of crack you have over here is a concern, and they will produce a report from the top to the bottom of everything they see. Whether it's, they think it's cosmetic, whether they think it's a priority. So we're waiting for that proposal. We can consider it and talk more about it, and in the meantime, I'm calling other libraries that are working with them to get feedback about what the experience has been like, but it seems like they're a pretty good match for the situation we're in. Additionally, that firm also works with libraries as they put together bonds, as they combine funding streams from different areas. So if, if you approach them and you say, we have this much bond, but we've got this much state and our foundation raised this much, and they're used to working with that kind of funding. So I think, I think there, we're in a good place with them. The other thing we talked about that's been recommended to us is if you're doing a major product, project, having some sort of clerk of the works or something like that to oversee all of the work being done on the project, that the, you know, electrical contractor put in what he said he was supposed to, and that is a good thing, Lothrup does recommend that kind of thing, but we're not at that point. Those, those kinds of people, and we've, we've been, you know, given some names and recommendations of people who do this kind of work. But we're not there yet. We don't even know what our problems are exactly, or what we're going to do to correct them, so we don't really need a clerk of the works to be following those projects yet. What we need is the assessment. And so far, Lothrup looks like the firm that does this kind of thing. When it comes to some of our other projects that are going on, that's, that's the big thing. We're still gathering data on the retaining wall until we have enough base data, we can't really, you know, we can't really move. It's, it's, we just have to let them collect the data. They're very active, they've been out in the past two weeks, I've seen them once a week, they've been doing something on site, so I feel good about that. We have a proposal for decommissioning the well that is no longer functioning. It was a very interesting proposal, it had, there was one figure that was $1,800 to do something, and then there was please add 8,000 to the above price for some other things. Quite a big spread there. So Karen and I sent that off to the engineering firm and the surveyors to try and get some feedback about what they thought of that proposal, I haven't heard back from them yet.
So, again.
The survey is being done by Langham. And when it comes to some other things that are going on around the building, there are quite a few exterior projects that are on hold because of the weather, it's just not optimal to repair concrete and some other things at this time of year. But we do have proposals from C and P, and I'm also talking to the village, I think it's the village town, I always get it mixed up, about having some repair work done to the sidewalk that is in front of our driveway. It's failed completely, I don't know if any of you have driven into the potholes lately, but I'm working to get that resolved. And, oh, and we're just continuing on with painting and interior work. Just, you know, just a reminder, a lot of the carpet and paint has never been touched. It has not been replaced since the building was built, so we got our money's worth out of it, and we just really have to do something about it now, and to touch on something-
It's fifteen- It's 15 years.
15 years of public.
It, it's no longer the new library. It's 15 years old, right?
Um, and I wanted to address something Jaime said about, um, you know, new equipment, furniture services. Um, we have been working with our insurance assessor and, um, and Allison and I met with him in addition to Karen. And we have a spreadsheet database system now that we can enter, um, value items into. So as we replace out computers, they get assigned inventory tags. We enter the inventory information. So for example, the built-in wood counters that we took out of the computer lab, those all had inventory tags. We documented them with photographs. Um, you know, how they were disposed of is put into that insurance inventory. So we do have that tracked over time and the insurance, um, assessor, uh, gave us some, you know, breakdowns for things like you don't necessarily want to count every, you know, $40 plastic chair that comes in and out of the building, but over X value you do. And so we've got, we've got a pretty good handle on that right now. Um, and I think that's it. Is there anything else, Karen?
No, I think that's it, Molly.
Okay.
Molly's been very busy these days.
I'm happy to answer any questions. Um, I, the building committee did get to, um, uh, some of you met with Dattner, some of you met with Lothrup, some of you met with Lothrup once, some twice. So if anybody wants to, you know, comment on, you know, how they felt about, um, the firms or the, the people you spoke with, um, confidence level.
Um, I don't know if anyone was able to participate in the recent, uh, book club facility on facilities.
I did that one. Yeah.
And that was so excellent. And everything you just highlighted about what Lothrup can offer us is just like checking off everything that they identified as good practice. And as I'm sitting there listening to, you know, and as you're doing improvements and as you're doing maintenance and redesign, you can think about going green. You can think about, you know, geothermal. And I was like sitting there thinking, I would just like to like raise my hand and say, well, what happens when we did all those things and we did them early on and learned some very hard lessons after the fact? You know, what hap, I kind of felt we were a small niche in terms of things that complicate this area.
Yeah, yeah. And one of the things I liked about, I mean, it's kind of terrifying to hear somebody talk about forensic architecture and you hope they don't find this, you know, smoking rubble behind your wall.
We have a sense that that might be about.
But, but at the same time, if, you know, it, that may be the best thing for us. That may truly be the best thing and the thing that gives us all the most comfort and peace of mind that we made the right decisions.
Right.
Because we have a clear understanding of what we have and how we got it.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Good.
I just wanted to say thank you, Molly, because I really appreciate that, you know, you have a, a forensic firm that is, is on the job because I believe it's going to make a difference.
I do too. I, I really, I felt especially after listening to him talk about some, Karen was there and so was Matt, I think, um, talking about some cases where they, you know, they actually went to court and testified about, you know, things that were done on the job that then created dangerous situations or, you know, other things. That's what they do. That's a big part of what they do. And so I'm, I'm glad we were able to find them. And I'm hoping that we get all glowing reports from the other people working with them and that we get a nice proposal that we can talk about next time.
Mm hmm. Thank you.
Mm hmm.
Very good.
Thanks, Megan.
And yes, there is forensic architecture. It's an, it's an interesting field that, um, we're learning about. One thing's for sure, you'll learn more about buildings and grounds than you ever wanted to in this, in this position. As Karen and Molly can attest. If there are no other questions or comments on that topic, we can move on to the three resolutions. And the first one reads Resolution 55, whereas the Austin Public Library's 2021-2022 budget includes a budget of $50,000 in account 7410200 for the building of modular spaces. And whereas the cost estimates for purchasing and installing K1 modular architectural walls in the teen services office spaces and the second floor study rooms is $65,969. And whereas the SAM grant number 24693 will pay for $60,000 of this cost. Be it resolved therefore that the Board of Trustees will commit up to $6,000 from account 7410200 to pay for the costs over and above the SAM grant funding. Karen, any comments or any questions or discussion from anyone?
Just to, um, to clarify, this is the grant that was, um, procured for us by Senator Reifland Melnick, this, uh, the 60, that we have a lot of grants in play right now, so it's very easy to get confused. Um, we need to certify, I'm, I'm filing paperwork right now with, with Dasni. We need to certify that we have funds over and above the grant amount to complete this part of the project.
If there are no additional questions or comments, I'll entertain a motion to accept Resolution 55 in a second so we could proceed to a vote. And Cecilia and Amanda, thank you. All in favor of Resolution 55, please indicate by raising your hand. And we have everyone's hand. Any abstentions or objections? There being none, it carries seven zero. The next resolution, number 56, reads resolve that the Board of Trustees accepts with gratitude the $25,000 bullet aid grant presented to the Austin Public Library by Westchester Delegations of the New York State Senate and Assembly. Karen, with any, um, additional comments?
This is the grant that, um, I informed the board of, was it the January meeting? I can't remember. But, uh, certain amounts were sent to various Westchester County libraries.
Mm hmm.
Unrestricted.
And if we have no questions or comments, I'll entertain a motion to accept Resolution 56 in a second so we could proceed to a vote. And we have Allison, Megan, thank you. All in favor of Resolution 56, please indicate by raising your hand. And we have all hands. Any abstentions or objections? There being none, carries seven zero. Resolution 57, the next one reads, resolve that the Board of Trustees approves the retention of Bond, Schneek and King D L L C for General Counsel Services for their confirmation of services letter dated February 15th, 2022. And is that for one year?
This is, this is for one year for general counsel stuff. So anything to, anything not to do with personnel.
Okay. So if we could, uh, okay. So it references the letter. That's, okay. Any additional questions or comments on Resolution 57? And if there are none, I'll entertain a motion in a second so we could proceed to a vote. Thank you, Alice and Cecilia. All in favor of Resolution 57, please indicate by raising your hand. And if there are any abstentions or objections, there being none, it carries seven zero. We're ready to move on to executive session unless somebody has something they'd like to say during the minutes or the moments of our meeting. And I would say then Kathy, thank you very much. And Molly, thank you very much for joining us. Your efforts are always appreciated. And I'll entertain a motion to go and exec in a second so I could vote on it. And we have, uh, Shanti and, uh, Megan, thank you. All in favor of going to exec and ending the meeting? Please indicate by raising your hand. Then we have all in favor, no extensions or objections. So we'll see you. Um, oh, everyone's gone. So it's just us and you Karen.
Craig is on his way. He's coming.
Okay. So you can actually shut off the recording.
Thank you, Matt.
I, I make notes now, so I know what I'm eating. If there are no comments or questions at this time, I just want to thank everyone very much for this effort. I can't imagine having had this long session with a regular meeting. We meet again on the 21st. Hope everyone stays well. And if we have committee meetings, I'll see you then. Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn in a second. Alice, thank you. And Amanda, you blinked. That's good enough. And all those in favor of adjourning, please indicate by raising your hand. Ah, no extensions or objections. It carries seven zero. Uh, thank you very much, Karen. Everyone have a great night.
Thanks, everyone. Take care.